Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will bring this school board meeting of District 544 to order. Will you take the call?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Limkey.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present.
Steven Vigasun.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. We made a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
All seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Grace United Methodist Church for their donation of winter clothing items and to Deanna Tuttle for donating fish tackle and boxes to the fishing team. Could someone offer that resolution for adoption?
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second that.
For its adoption.
Missy, will you take the call, please?
Yes. Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasun.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. So we'll move into our board report and we'll kick it off with our elementary principals. Almost Scott Colbeck.
Good evening. So this Thursday, kind of exciting time at Adams and McKinley. We're going to kick off our one book, one school activity. We're looking forward to that. Mr. Evavold, our Title I teacher at Adams School, he's going to read the first chapter allowed to all of the Adams School first and second graders in the cafeteria. While he's doing that, I'm going to be doing the same thing with all three of our first grade classrooms at McKinley School. The idea behind one book, one school is, one of the ideas behind it is to get some family involvement. So the kids will be assigned to go home and read a chapter in the evening with parents. A lot of times, this is a trade book or a chapter book, so it oftentimes requires a parent to read it with their child. And then the child brings the book to school the next day, they read the same chapter again in school the next day. Therefore, you know, you've got kids in your classroom, some of them will have read the first chapter or heard it, read to them the night before, some of them will not. This way, we keep everybody on the same page. But we're looking forward to one book, one school. And I think I mentioned that it's Mr. Knick every year that kind of leads that effort. He's a first grade teacher at Adams, so we appreciate that. Wanted to let you guys know something I've just been very thankful for this year. This past summer, got an email from Superintendent Drake. He emailed Mrs. Run and myself, and we used some one-time Esther dollars to fund a reading and math intervention, a reading and math interventionist position. And we placed one person, Myrna Manosa, at McKinley School, and the other person, Troy Davis, at Adams School. And the idea behind these two folks is when we can't find guest teachers or substitute teachers from outside of our organization to come into our schools, we tap into these people. Today was the 111th day of school, and Myrna Manosa has subbed 55 times out of 111 days of school. Troy Davis, 53 times. So every day this school year, when I'm texting Myrna Manosa or Troy Davis at 7:30 in the morning telling them where we might need them that day, I think about next year. And then I'm just reminded how thankful we've been to have these people here this year. Once in a while, we need to send Mr. Davis over to Cleveland. Not often, but once in a great while, Myrna Manosa has had to come over to Adams. But most of the time, they're just staying in the schools that they've been assigned to. All right, moving on. I've talked to you before about our guest artist, Sarah Ronovic. She's now starting to make round two through our classrooms. She taught an art lesson to all of the second grade classrooms and first grade classrooms. I believe she's going to be starting up at Cleveland pretty soon. When she gets done with Cleveland, we'll bring her back to McKinley to do round two with the kindergartners. This time, if you were to visit Adams School, you'd see a lot of watercolor paintings hung in hallways of a farm, a pharmacy. So a barn, the red barn, the silo, the trees, the fields, and really nice work done by Sarah Ronovic with our students. A little bit about spring parent teacher conferences. I've always joked in the past that, you know, why do we call it spring parent teacher conferences when it's still feeling like winter? But right now, it's really truly feels like spring parent teacher conferences. Anyway, letters went home on Friday, and we'll start moving forward to get everybody signed up for a conference. This Friday, just if any public is watching this, just a reminder, we don't have any school for students on Friday. It's a staff development day. Just wanted to recognize and thank Krista Simon-Gard for chairing the staff development committee and the work that she does leading that group. And we're looking forward to a good morning of staff development. I've talked with this group about this before, but we continue to recognize weekly our first and second graders at Adams and McKinley for their safe and kind, respectful, responsible behavior, and also we give them an award for kids that are ready to learn. So at Adams School, these kids are called down every Friday, one student from each classroom to receive a certificate. Those kids, they have their picture taken, put up on the wall. At McKinley, we do a little bit differently. I go into the first grade classrooms and present one certificate to one student in each of the three first grade classrooms there. And I always like to ask the kids two questions when I present. One is, hey, when you go home tonight, where are you going to hang this? And you can imagine, most of them will say, most of them will say, on the refrigerator. And then the next question I ask them is, what will your parents say to you when they see your certificate? And that one's more interesting because a lot of kids will just stand very quietly and not quite know what to say. So then I'll put some words in their mouth for them to say. Might they say that they're really proud of you? Yeah, yeah, that's what they're going to say. And then also, although we're well into third quarter, recently I did get into classrooms to recognize kids for their good attendance during second quarter. Any student that misses two days or less during the second quarter receives what we call an attendance charm for their Jaws necklace. We have some fun with that, too, because when we take attendance, we keep attendance down to the quarter of a day. So some students might miss one and three-quarter days, others, three-fourths of a day or a day and a quarter. So when we call a student up, I'll say something like, okay, second graders, so-and-so here missed more than a day and a half, but they missed less than two days. So how much did they miss? And it's kind of fun to see the wheels spinning a little bit as they are learning about numbers that are not whole numbers. So we have fun with that. Not on my notes, but I just want to mention to it, mention this, Mr. Greby with his first grade kids, you know, I told him, I said, you know, Mr. Greby, this is almost, this could almost count like a PBL, project-based learning. But his first grade kids have been putting on skits for all of the other classrooms at McKinley. And so he has four different, I think, four entirely different skits going on. And so the kindergarten class might come into Mr. Greby's classroom, sit down at the first grade desks, which is probably a big deal for a kindergartner since they've only sat at a table and not a desk. And then they watch these, watch these plays or these performances that his kids are giving. So, you know, thank you to Mr. Greby for that because those are some pretty meaningful experiences for those kids, and you can see excitement in those first graders when they have a new class coming to watch their performances. So with that, I'll end my presentation and entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions? For Principal Colbeck?
All right, thank you.
Our next board report then will be from our other elementary principal, Tindie Radlott.
All right, good evening, everyone. Well, it's now the end of February, and each year at Cleveland during February, we celebrate friendship and draw attention to friendship because during these middle childhood years when they're nine and turning that magical age of 10, when they hit double digits, friendships are a big deal. And they're learning how to, learning the dynamics of friendships. They're certainly learning how to share friends, which is a challenge in and of itself. Kind of learning the art of compromise and how that can spur things in the right direction. They're learning how to develop trust and how to deal with those situations where there's distrust. Dealing with social dilemmas, that's a big topic of conversation, and how do we work through those social dilemmas when we have a disagreement? Even accepting peer feedback. At this age, they're all starting to notice each other more and more. They're starting to give each other more and more feedback, and what do you do with that peer feedback when it's coming your direction? And all through that, it is our task to help kids really recognize, what are my options? What are my options? Do I stay here and take it? Do I say something? Do I just walk away? We talk a lot about, in those difficult situations, what are your options and what might you do differently next time? So to celebrate friendship, we have had Friendship Fridays in February, so we've had a different theme each Friday. And last Friday was the last Friday of February, so we all wore iron and gold and celebrated Otter Spirit, the one of our friendship. That's been a common theme during February. And then last Wednesday was Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and we had several students write notes of appreciation to give to their bus drivers. And you know how special those handcrafted notes are and those cards and letters, but there were several that were pretty excited. And even today, on the way out the door, one little boy had his piece of paper with a big yellow school bus that he drew on it, ready to give his bus driver today because he missed out on that last Wednesday. So just wanted to recognize our partnership with Otter Tail Coaches and how we rely on them and how often they just accommodate and make adjustments to get our students where we need to have them be. Sometimes it's been last minute, sometimes it's been another loop around the block to pick up that straggler that we overlooked, but they really do a great job of working with us and serving our district really well. So a big thank you to Otter Tail Coaches for their partnership. And then this week at Cleveland, we have some special programs going on. Missy Hermes is one of our guest speakers this week. Today, she did a presentation regarding American Indian history for fourth graders, and we get to have her return tomorrow to catch the other fourth grade classrooms. So that's great. This month in March, or February, is also Dental Health Awareness Month. So on Wednesday of this week, we have a dental hygienist educator coming to Cleveland, and she's going to present lessons to all of the classrooms on just dental health care and the importance of that. And then the last couple of weeks, and then this week and next week, our third grade classes are taking their field trips to Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. And in previous years, when Prairie Wetlands Learning Center had a more robust staff, they were, these visits were happening nearly monthly. And now this year, we have needed to taper them back. They had a visit in October, they're having visits now in February, and then in April, we will be planning visits for the third grade classrooms to go to Prairie and partner with a fourth grade class. And I believe they'll be planting seeds about that time. So they've harvested seeds in the fall. Right now, it might have been a snow showing activity, but without any snow, we needed to change plans. And then in April, they will get to take those seeds that have been planted and then put them back into the, add them back to the Prairie. So they always look forward to those Prairie Wetlands Learning Center field trips. And then next week is the first week of March. Courtney Anderson will be conducting the access test with our EL students. That is a suite of English language proficiency assessments for students in grades K through 12. The assessment covers four language domains, listening, reading, writing, and speaking. And the test is clustered by grade, so pre-K, K, first and second, third, fourth, and fifth, so on and so forth. So that's an assessment that's given to all our EL students each year about this time. Also, next week is going to be the fourth grade band orientation on March 7. In previous years, we've done that in the spring of the year, maybe like the last week of April, first week of May. This year, we decided to bump it up for a couple of reasons. It's really nice for us to get a, well, a measure of who is interested in participating in those music options at the fourth and fifth grade level. And also, May is going to be a really fast full month, and this is one activity that we could bump up a little bit sooner and still get the information to the students and gather the information that we're interested in learning. And then lastly, conferences and registration. Those at Cleveland, we decided to mail that out last Friday. Along with the conference information, we also sent a letter to parents indicating that we really need them to update their child's registration for the 2024-25 school year this time. That allows us to identify students who are interested in participating in the Prairie Science class option. We also have questions regarding orchestra participation, band involvement in that registration, so it's very helpful to get that as soon as we can. So we mailed that information to parents, and we'll be asking them to either complete their child's registration ahead of time or on the evening of conferences, we will have laptops set up for them to use right at school following your child's conference as well. So hope to get ahead of that. And that's my report for tonight. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Principal?
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our high school principal, Mark Anderson.
Good evening. February 13th and 15th, the last Tuesday and Thursday, we had registration night, usually a conference science slash registration. We usually have about 8% of our parents throw up. We had 75% of our parents come with their son and daughter to register for, so that was nice to see. A lot of kids were in the building registering with their guided study hall teachers or Otter Tail teachers, so we're happy about that, fixing things that may not have gotten into the computer correctly, but we're looking forward to finishing that up this week. We're also working with Tamara, you know her, Jeff, is it Usulman?
Usulman.
Yep. From Lakes Country Cooperative, and she's going to do some listening sessions with about 40 of our students who said they're interested in kind of talking to us about supports and needs that they need at the high school related to mental health, suicide awareness, and conversations like that. So March 6, we'll have about 40 kids from 12 to 1 o'clock down at the community ed room, getting, giving information to them, outside agency, get to say what they want and get to hear from them of what needs they might need from us this year, and then what do we need to look at for next year during Otter Time to help support kids additionally and with their support for both mental health and suicide awareness. We have had a great winter of activities. Our Nordic Ski Team, boys, went to state. Our one girl attended that same day from Nordic Ski Girls Team. Our Otter Girls Hockey Team went last week, and then we had a couple of gymnasts go down last week also. So winter's not over yet. I don't know what basketball will bring. I don't think we sent anybody for wrestling, but it sounds like we have two or three swimmers going also that we'll have a send-off on Wednesday for. So it's been a good winter for some students and some activities. We also have begun planning for the 24-25 school year, so we're starting to look at what do we need for FTEs in each area of the departments. We also had the English department work on their passion projects in ninth grade, and some of those things go with their project-based learning. So kids give presentations on things that they would like to see and be able to do when they get older. Jessica Anderson invited myself, Shane, a few other teachers in the building in, and also Eli Hill came, so he gave the opportunity to talk to kids when they're juniors and seniors that work-based learning is an opportunity to meet some of the needs that they're looking at. So they were quite interested in him talking about those opportunities as they get older. We do have an artist in residence, Aubrey Baumann. If you haven't walked down the 2900 hallway down at the end of the high school here, there is a hallway of students from activity or athletics in there. She is now finished with that. She's taking a few days off this week before she starts trimester three for us, painting on the walls with our fine arts on the other side. So she completed eight people, no faces, no numbers, in almost eight weeks. She's amazing. She paints it in a day and draws another one the next day. But she's taking a few days here to get school finished up for trimester two, but it's really cool. Couple of kids, as she graduates, are already asking, what's my next hallway and what can I paint? So we also have the Reach eighth graders and seventh graders worked with our high school Reach group. They're going to be putting up a painted area in the foyer for the high school about You Belong and having comments on there that are related to making sure kids know that they are loved and cared for as they walk through our hallways. Our American Indian students will be taking a trip to Minnesota Morris University on March 6, so opportunity to go to campus, see what opportunities are out there for college. They also get a lunch that day. We are also working with Lynn Johnson to finalize our celebration for seniors that are American Indians the night before graduation, both for the ALC and high school, and a celebration for just them and their families. We are looking at some blankets and some other opportunities to give to them as they are preparing for graduation. And we had some music students also honored last week at our send-off. We had orchestra, band, and choir kids who went to the L State Ensemble, found out that our young lady who is in orchestra, we've had three kids actually partake in that in the history of Fergus Falls, she has done it twice. So it was quite interesting to watch her take that information in, and then knowing that she's going to be a future high school teacher and college professor, it's pretty cool to see that she's taking that opportunity to build into her future. The ALC had some really cool stuff going on with some staff and students. So the four staff attended the MAP Conference down in Mankato two weeks ago. Sessions were specific to alternative education, including funding, MDE Q and A, stress reduction for students, AI, early middle college partnerships, as were all our three keynote speakers. Jesus, a senior from the ALC, was a speaker at the MAP Conference and at the MAP Convention, where he promoted the program. He hopes that all ALC and ALP programs develop a chapter of MAP. He had the opportunity for another school, Little Falls, to come up and actually see and visit our school and talk about MAP programming, so they're working with our ALC on that piece and opportunity. Jesus is also going to represent alternative education and testify at the Capitol of St. Paul. I just hope they treat him better than they have treated other students in the past when they've presented to them in that legislation opportunity. He also had his picture taken with Mr. Jett, the Commissioner of Education, so it's pretty cool. Yes, he's bumping shoulders with the right people. I may have to follow him down, bump shoulders with him. We had other students, Evan, Justin, Brandon, and Jesus also met with the state legislators in St. Paul, 221, and to advocate for continued money for alternative education, mental health support, MAP stars, and improving alternative education across the state. The Secretary of State, Steve Simon, spoke to students in Mr. Burlingame's class last Thursday. He was teaching them about 16 and 17-year-olds to register to vote, so when you're 18, you don't have to worry about doing it, it's already done. He also spoke to Elizabeth Abraham's class up here, fifth hour, and to juniors and seniors during Otter Time last week. They tried to get him to answer his beliefs in certain areas, and he kept reminding him his only goal is to get them to vote, so it was pretty cool. They tested him, and he won 100% down. IQ Academy, they did some really good things last semester. Passing rate for all students, the middle school, was 81%, which is up, and the high school is 83%. Part-time and district students is at 92%, which is up, so leads to some work that they have done through the IQ program. Catch-up days at the end of semester, from 118 to the last day, 124, actually allowed them to get additional 57 credits passed at the middle school and another additional 155 credits at the high school, allowing kids to come in and not come in, but catch-up days to get those things taken care of. Their enrollment on 9/19/23 for K-12 was 569. On January 23, our enrollment was 698. That's an increase of 129 students. Now Ryan wants me to remind everybody that now factor in 157 students who withdrew and went someplace else. So they had over 855 kids that they worked with total in trimester one. IQ Parent Teacher Conferences are March 4 through the 7. IQ Social will be March 8, ice skating in the hockey arena down here from 10 to 11. IQ is a closing their enrollment, end of quarter three, which is March 22. And MCA testing for IQ will start the March 25. Any questions?
The 40 kids that are going to meet with Ms. Usulman, how did you pick those kids?
We put a survey out after our student suicide and wanted to know how kids were doing. Our intent was, they didn't ask them for their name, they knew we were asking for their email address. And one of the questions, well, we asked a number of questions. How are you doing? Do you need support? Do you know how to connect your counselor? Last question is, we're offering a listening session, are you interested? Those who said yes, we took right away and said, here's a letter, take it home to mom and dad, let them know that we're taking in that opportunity. We didn't pick them, they picked us through the opportunity.
Yeah, you should get some vocal students then.
Yep. It's a great mix of kids. It runs the gamut from everybody we have in the building. Plus, there's a couple of kids in the ALC, so they want to be part of it.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then on to Superintendent Drake.
I am pinch-hitting for Principal Hurst tonight. So we'll start with the middle school report. Dean of Students' Interviews will be held on February 28, and that will be done with the middle school leadership team and Mr. Hurst. And they're going to interview seven candidates. There was a healthy pool of applicants for that position, so that was very good. Middle school parent teacher conferences are scheduled for March 11 and 14. This information has been communicated out to families. Math Counts Competition. Recently, 12 eighth-grade students participated at the Height of Land Chapter Math Counts Competition on Wednesday, February 7 at MSUM. Our top team placed third in the team competition, and six students placed in the top 20 for the individual competition. Thank you to Mrs. Steer for providing our students with this opportunity to compete in the area of math. Spelling Bee update. Excuse me. The Regional Spelling Bee was held on February 6 at Lakes Country Service Co-op. Jacob Warner, seventh grader, placed first overall from a pool of approximately 30 students. He earned a trip to National Harbor, Maryland at the end of May to participate in the Scripps National Spelling Bee. He and one parent will be staying at the MGM Resort, and Jacob will be one of approximately 230 students competing. So congratulations to Jacob. Also notable, Andrew Edgerly, sixth grader, placed fifth in the regional competition. Middle School Musico. Mrs. Janelle Trosvik and Mrs. Ashley Sands co-directed an absolutely wonderful rendition of Frozen Junior. They performed for students in grades three through eight on February 9, and also had an evening performance on February 8. A shout-out to the students and advisors for an outstanding performance. Wes May, a Native American artist, was here on January 30. He was brought here through the work of the American Indian Program and the Parent Advisory Board. He met with sixth-grade students in four small groups, and the students created murals. These murals are displayed in the hall across from the middle school office. This was a great experience for our students. Here is an excerpt from Wes's website. "I'm a Native American from the Red Lake Indian Reservation in northern Minnesota and a First Peoples Fun artist. I believe that an artist's role in the community is to bring awareness of the voices that are rarely heard, not to lead the charge of any cause, but to unleash the potential of others through art. I travel around to art shows, powwows, and other community events and empower others through live exhibition paintings. At these exhibitions, I demonstrate with all the care and concern of love, my craft and technique, and explain how it shows in each brush stroke. I speak of how we approach a blank canvas is similar to how we approach life. Either we step up and just do it, or we stop, hesitate, not wanting to make a mistake. As we move through a painting, what we thought might have been mistakes disappear as we continue to work on the painting, and the more beautiful the paintings become. The same with life. What we thought were mistakes, we can fix them and move on." And lastly, Reach. The Reach teacher is Becca Kruger. She does fantastic work with our students. Recently, the eighth-grade Reach students visited and played games with some of the residents at the Pioneer Care Center. Our visit was from 1 to 2 p.m. We will be visiting once per month for the remaining school year. Students and residents had a lot of fun. A few students had so much fun, they asked to go back next week. Another student is asking how to become a CNA, a successful visitor. They had fun listening to stories and helping out. It feels good to do good is the sort of motto for these visits. And then I will transition to my report. So again, thank you to our bus drivers and our partnership with Otter Tail Coaches. Had an opportunity to join them for breakfast out at Otter Tail Coaches and Had an opportunity to join them for breakfast out at Otter Tail Coaches and just a really happy crew, and they were receiving some jackets as a token of appreciation for their hard work out there, and we couldn't be more thankful for the work that they do. Principal Anderson mentioned this earlier, but congratulations to our state girls hockey team, state-bound girls hockey team. They had a nice tournament down there, lots of tough teams, so the competition is fierce, but we're really proud of them for another fantastic season. And we did have two gymnasts, Maya and Mashala, who had qualified for the state gymnastics competition. If I'm remembering right, one qualified in beam and the other one on the floor exercises. I think that's accurate. We also had a number of students, as Principal Anderson also mentioned, that qualified for the, or made state in choir, band, and orchestra. And that print is way too small for me to read that off from here, but congratulations to those students. And then Dennis Witzke was honored as a Teacher of the Month, so congratulations to Dennis Witzke and all his hard work. Mentioned Jacob Warner from Principal Hurst's report. So the successful word that knocked out the rest of the competition was apiary. So congratulations to Jacob and best of luck to him as he competes at the national level at the end of May. Bryn Sternberg scored her one thousand point, so congratulations to Bryn on a fine career so far. And then we do have two relays and six individual event qualifiers for state in honor boys swimming and diving teams. So Reese Hanson qualified in a couple areas, as did Matthew Tool, and then Jayden Kopinski and Logan Rot also qualified for the individual state tournament. So good luck to those swimmers and the two relays. Knowledge Bowl, this was a regular meet result, fresh off the press from today. Out of seventeen teams, our four teams placed second, fifth, eighth, and twelfth. Upcoming events, we have a kindergarten meet and greet on the afternoon of March twenty-second, and there are two different programs that they could go through there depending on which session fits their schedule the best. And then we have an Otter Girls Home Basketball Playoff Game this Thursday at seven P.M. A couple of famous guest readers have been in our elementary schools for I Love to Read Month, and this is the photo of Jesus and Commissioner Jett, the Principal Anderson mentioned in his report, and what a great opportunity for ALC students to get down there and talk about the learning they do and the pride that they take in their program. I wanted to break up the new school. I'm going to talk in chunks about this over the next four or five board meetings, but it would be a lot to cover in a single meeting, so I wanted to take this in a little bit smaller bites. So, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, there will be a special bond election to consider a hundred and two thousand square foot, grades three through five, elementary building. The site is on twenty-nine acres, and it would also hold a middle school baseball field and a middle school soccer field. Price tag for the structure is fifty-four point eight million dollars, payable over twenty-two years with an estimated bond rate at five percent. And the, again, the bond would be on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. The building site is twenty-nine acres. It is adjacent to Hilltop Celebration Church, and it is across two-ten from the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. It is within city limits, it does have city utilities running to it, it does have access onto Highway two-ten, but it also has easements, two easements onto Cascade, which makes accessibility really pretty good for us and a location that is really desirable given its, its nearness to the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. How will students benefit from this project if approved by the voters? So the new school, in comparison, McKinley and Adams, which we would look to sell and have repurposed to meet other community needs, were both built in nineteen thirty-nine. This new school would have up-to-date safety and security systems. They would have, would have areas designated for environmental science, so especially important with our partnership with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and being an award-winning program with the Prairie Science Class and one of only two programs of, of its kind nationally. So it's a program that we really believe strongly in and has produced really some lifelong changes in our students that choose to go through it. It would also eliminate some travel needs with some components of Cleveland that just the structure there, the building there, doesn't have the larger group rehearsal space, which creates a situation where we're bussing students back and forth between Cleveland and KSS for band and orchestra instruction. And the same really is true with the amount of time our students are spending on a bus to travel from either, either Cleveland or KSS to go to the Prairie Science classrooms at Prairie Wetlands Learning Center. So when you think about the time they're on those bus seats, that's about thirty-five to forty minutes a day just in transporting back and forth. And we want to conserve some of that learning time and have the students back in the classrooms learning from their teachers. We would have spaces specifically designed to meet modern instructional practices, so STEM, the ability to do project-based learning, maker spaces, collaborative learning stations, the ability for students to create using engineering principles and really develop those teamwork skills, those leadership skills, those higher-order thinking skills, and communication skills. At twenty-nine acres, this would provide us with some much-needed green space. Our district has six buildings, but really hardly any green space on, on the facilities. And the stuff that we do have is, is basically fully utilized with maybe a little bit of a chunk of the eight acres that we bought out at, at Lincoln, which is still in development. Dedicated gym and student commons areas, I mentioned the ball fields earlier, natural daylight and energy efficient, efficient building systems. And then the, it would also address the significant parking challenges in bus and vehicle pickup after school. One of the pieces that is limiting for us with the small sites and where they're located is it would be fairly common to do like a third grade, an entire third grade holiday program where all of the parents were coming in and watching the kids perform. Because we have no parking, we typically break that up into a classroom or maybe two classrooms at a time. So it does limit some of the things that we're able to do with some of those public performances that we enjoy and are well-loved by our parents. And then it would give us room to grow as needed. It would precipitate some further restructuring of where grades are held, are housed in the district. Lincoln would continue to hold our early childhood and otter preschool programs and kindergarten. Cleveland would become the home for grades one and two. The new school, grades three through five, and then Kennedy Secondary School, a combination of the six through eight middle school and the nine through twelve high school. So in future presentations, I will talk about the condition of Adams and McKinley. I will talk about how this plan fits into our vision for otter, otter education and the portrait of a graduate. And then I will get into more in-depth on the tax impact if approved by the voters in May. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have the minutes from our February twelve, twenty twenty-four regular school board meeting, and then move to the bills report, February thirteenth.
All right. Ms. C and I met with Renee before this meeting, and we reviewed one point six million dollars in bills, and so I'm going to do it a little bit different this time. So the Food Service Fund was seventy-four thousand of that one point six million. Fifty-eight thousand, that went to one vendor, U.S. Foods. There was about six thousand eight hundred community service and various things, a few student activities, twelve hundred dollars. Building construction was six hundred and sixty-two thousand, and those dollars went to a number of vendors, and they're all working on the Lincoln Project right now. And so would have been drywall, gas construction, first drywall, Lake Country Mechanical, R.A. Morton, Summit Fire Protection, Twin City Harbor, Vinco Electric. And so that's the bulk of that. So again, two hundred and, six hundred and sixty-two thousand for building construction. And so the rest of our bills was, were in the general fund, nine hundred and seven thousand. And of that nine hundred and some thousand, three vendors took up probably close to seventy percent of that. Special ed co-op was two hundred and nineteen thousand. Health insurance for our employees was two hundred and ten thousand, and Stride, also known as IQ Academy or K-12 Management, was two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that just gives you an idea of where some of the big dollars are going. Some of the, some of the more interesting ones, we always like to go, go through some of those as well. We didn't have any dog sleds this, this time. BSN Sports, we're getting some caps. We did have a roof leap above the community ed area that Buttweiler's took care of, because that electric came in and had to do some, some work on a, on a lock. That was six hundred dollars. Energy Tech came in, about three thousand dollars on a HVAC controller over at Cleveland. And Lot Pros, you don't see this very often in February, but Lot Pros was doing crack ceiling, something that we normally do in April. With all the freeze and thaw cycles that we've had this month, this was the time to do it. Lots of supplies. One of the bigger ones in the general fund was a Toolcat that we bought for, for maintenance and for, for doing, it's, it's a Bobcat vehicle, but it's, they call it a Toolcat, and it just does so much more than just what a regular Bobcat can do. And we still have a little bit of salting and sanding and a little bit of snow removal, about twenty-eight hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars. And so hopefully we're saving some money there as well as saving some money on our, on our heating bills this year. That's the bills that we reviewed on this off-cycle meeting, but thanks for, Melissa for coming in early, and thanks Renee for having things and answering all of our questions.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we'll move on then to personnel. Good evening, everyone. So a number of items here, and then I'll go, go through here with everyone. Certified staff resignation, Bailey, a high school counselor here at Kennedy Secondary School, and that's Becca at the end of the school year. Certified staff hire, Lauren Akers, part-time special education teacher at IQ Academy, and she started in a fit for the county first, and this is just due to the enrollment of students with disabilities and which necessitated the, the hire of an additional special education teacher due, due to their workloads. Support staff resignation, Darcy Landberg, Title One Paraprofessional, and she's resigning in order to take a par educator position. Support staff retirement, Dan Ross, head custodian at Roseville Education Center, and later on, we have a resolution on his retirement, and he's worked with the school district for twenty-seven years. Support staff hires, Kristen Lenoey, special education paraprofessional. Darcy Landberg, as I mentioned before, par educator at Cleveland. Janaye Babic, Title One Para at Cleveland. And then Darren Mako, he'll be a full-time voter custodian beginning March eighteenth. So I recommend these all for board approval.
Make it a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'm going to make that motion.
In a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. If opposed, say nay. These are approved. We don't have any old business, we'll move into new business, and we have a resolution relating to issuance of school loan bonds and calling an election thereon. So buckle up. There's a little bit to read here. Okay. Number one, this school board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to borrow money in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifty-four million dollars, eight hundred and twenty thousand, and date or dates of the issuance of any bonds for the purpose of providing funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of a new, of a new grades three through five elementary school facility. Number two, the administration of the school district is hereby authorized and directed to consult with the Minnesota Department of Education and cause a proposal to be prepared and submitted to the Commissioner of Education for the Commissioner's review and comment on behalf of the school board. The actual holding of the special election on school district question one specified above shall be contingent upon the receipt of a positive or unfavorable review and comment from the Commissioner of Education on the projects included in the question. The clerk, number three, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the Commissioner's review and comment to be published in the legal newspaper of the district, of the district at least forty-eight hours, but not more than sixty days prior to the date of the special election. Number four, the school board must hold a public meeting to discuss the Commissioner's review and comment for the referendum bonds, before the referendum for bonds. Number five, the ballot question specified above shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, between the hours of seven o'clock a.m. and eight o'clock p.m. This date is a uniform election date specified in the Minnesota Statute, section two oh five eight point zero five. Number six, the school district's combined polling places in the precinct serve by the combined polling places as previously, previously established and designated by a resolution of the school board adopted November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, for elections held in twenty twenty-four and are hereby designated for the special election. Number seven, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare a notice to any voters who will be voting at a combined polling place for the special election. The notice must be sent by non-foreverable mail to every affected household in the school district that these one registered voter. Number eight, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be given to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, and the Commissioner of Education, and to the Commissioner of Education. Number nine, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted for public inspection at the administrative offices of the school district. Number ten, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district. Number eleven, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district. Number twelve, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in the combined polling places on election day. Number thirteen, the clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of the special election and generally to cooperate with election authorities conducting other elections on that date. Number fourteen, the clerk is further authorized and directed to cause a ballot to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form.
Please, for you guys?
With such changes in form, color, instruction, and content as may be necessary to accommodate any, accommodate an optical scan voting system or to comply with the form and content requirements of applicable state election laws. And the form is in our agenda. Number seventeen, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to provide for testing of optical scan voting system. Number eighteen, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of the location of the counting center or the place where the ballots will be counted to be published in the official newspaper. Number nineteen, the school board hereby establishes a ballot board to process, accept, and reject absentee, absentee ballots at school district elections. Number twenty, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to begin assembling names of trained election judges to serve at the combined polling places during the special election. Number twenty-one. Number twenty-one, the clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district under Minnesota Statute. That is it. Someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution, move for its adoption.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
And Missy will take roll?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudson?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thanks.
I got everybody, right?
Yep.
Okay. Got another one. The twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Whereas the Fergus Falls School District five forty-four has an APAC composed of parents, guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and par professionals, American Indian leaders, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school district affords the APAC necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the APAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education programming planning, and whereas the APAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of American Indian student, students, therefore be it resolved that the APAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute, section one twenty-four D point seven eight, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Someone offer that resolution?
I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
I'll second it.
And Missy will take roll again?
Yes.
Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
We have one more resolution on the retirement of Daniel Ross. Whereas Dan, Daniel Ross, began his employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in September nineteen ninety-six, and whereas Dan has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public School for twenty-seven years, whereas Dan has been a night custodian and a head custodian for the school district, and now therefore be it resolved by the school, Fergus Falls School Board to take Dan Ross' first twenty-seven years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Missy will you roll?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Limkey?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
That ends our regular school board meeting. Our next board meeting is Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, right here in the Otter Community Room at five fifteen. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If it was opposed, say nay. I adjourned.